Mark and Kevin, are we ready?
Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, June 23rd, 2022 Board of Directors Meeting for the Tacoma Public Schools to order. Please rise and relax. My allegiance to the law of the United States of America. Just to protect our livelihoods, we should stand one nation. I would come if it is all with the good intentions of our. One item out here. So, second item on the agenda is the, or third item is the, fourth item is the land acknowledgement. Boy, we're just going quickly here. All right. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to the lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel Renee Trueblood, for the last time, will you call the roll?
I'm honored to do so. Thank you, President Baumright.
Here.
Vice President Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Stroger.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right. So now we have item six, adoption of the agenda.
I motion to adopt.
You have a motion. Do we second it? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. We have an agenda. Item number seven, recognition of staff, students, and community. 7.1, recognition of the Gold Star Community Partner Award to the family of Donald and Donna J. Christian.
Awesome. Good evening, directors. Superintendent Garcia, beloved community, great to be here. Before we get started with today's presentation, I did want to give a shout out to a colleague, Justina Johnson, and her team, John Hines and Janice Davis, put on a day of healing at UPS, one of our longtime partners. It was a beautiful, beautiful day. Lots of community members, great workshops for staff, staff and community. Erin Jones facilitated a session, Jean Tagaban, who's an influential storyteller and trainer, Veronica Berry, who was a founder of the Women of Wonder Gallery in Seattle. She made, the introduction was made by Holly Bamford. She came and did a presentation today. There were workshops such as trauma stewardship tools for mindfulness, art reflection and looking to the future, unlearning racism, a study of masters of arts teaching candidate projects. And we also did something out of the Community Partnership Office and did our module on building relational trust, culturally responsive family engagement. So it was excellent. So I had to give her a shout out. If you missed it, you want to come next year. But people were so happy to get back together and it was a great day. All right. So on for our presentation. This is our last Gold Star of the Year, and it is my supreme pleasure to honor a family. And we're talking about two specific individuals, but it is a family legacy. And so today, before you, we have for nomination, the Gold Star Community Partner Award for the family of Donald and Donna J. Christian. So as you know, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. We know that our partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. So when it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. For nearly 50 years, Donald Duck and Donna J. Christian resided on Tacoma Public Schools' Lincoln Farm Tree, or Lincoln Tree Farm. The property, they lived on the property and served as valued caretakers for the over 300 acres of land. They were passionate supporters of outdoor learning experiences and served countless Tacoma students and community organizations over the year. Doc passed in 2020, and Donna's passing this spring inspired an opportunity for a reflective celebration with gracious appreciation for their commitment not only to the Lincoln Tree Farm, but their passion and commitment to students and learning. With each recollection of Doc's, Doc and Donna's presence, their evident commitment to service was highlighted through student interactions, teaching, and maintenance with a pride that was continually focused and aligned to doing what's best for kids. Today, we have their family, Doc and Donna's family with us, and I'm gonna call Doc's daughter to accept the award. Come on up. Can we give her a hand?
Yes. Thank you. I'm so, so appreciative of getting this award. My dad would just, is smiling right now so big. You know, that tree farm was his life. And when we brought him home from the hospital, they were logging the tree farm. These are trees that he had planted so many years ago. We were so upset. And Dad goes, "That's progress, Kelly. No, no big deal. You know, that's, that's what happens, you know? You plant the trees, they cut them, they're gonna replant, they'll reseed." We did not have a clue that was the last drive he was gonna take down that driveway. And so many kids came forward after he died to say, "He changed so many kids' lives." They thought that was gonna be a party place and that they could go up there and, and kind of kick back. And Dad would tell stories, and so many kids came forward saying, "I, I am totally a different person from your dad." I talked to several people, I brag about my dad. He would always say he cheated the system because he lived to be 95. But these people would tell me that they had my dad as a teacher. "Oh, my gosh, your dad's Doc Christian. They need to make a trophy, or make a, make a statue for him." Because he, everybody loved him. So thank you so much. And he would just be, and Donna would be just ecstatic.
Well, thank you. And we actually, all of us individually have learned firsthand about the value and the contributions that your parents made to the tree farm. We had a retreat a couple of years ago.
Did you, out there?
Out there. And it was absolutely spectacular. And the photos of what it used to be and how it evolved and all of their hard work and dedication. And we couldn't be more grateful to you. And I'm just sorry, you know, obviously, they aren't here to present to say, but I know that he would be thrilled, as would Donna. And thank you, thank you so much for your family's contributions to Tacoma Public School students and others that you served.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Item eight, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Today is the first board meeting after the close of school for the year. And we want to take a few minutes to honor a number of folks. And I'll just introduce Dr. Greek, who will take us through an important group, and then I'll make some other comments, and we have another presentation to talk through.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. On behalf of the district and the whole educator initiative, we are honored to recognize all staff who retired this school year. The education profession has one of the highest levels of influence in promoting healthy, safe, and a successful community. These staff members are specifically recognized and thanked for the years of service to the field of education and Tacoma Public Schools. We have a long list of folks that we'd like to recognize. Every one of these staff members has been a gift to Tacoma Public Schools. And currently, their names are listed on the hub, and employees can look more detail. They represent all of our different employee groups, as well as different positions across the district. And just thank you for their time, energy, wisdom, and commitment to students. We are grateful for, for how they chose Tacoma, and we wish the best as they enter this new and exciting phase of their life. Congratulations to all retirees for the 2021-22 school year.
Yep.
So, Madam President, Board of Directors, and those that are watching, really, we wanted to make sure that there was another public acknowledgement for our retirees. By no means could we do justice in a very quick slideshow. And that is not our intent here. But it is important for us to make sure that there is a public record all in one place. Some of these folks retired throughout the year. Some of them are just wrapping up, and some of them are wrapping up in the next couple of days. And so I want to say, on behalf of all the staff and colleagues, thank you to these individuals. No matter what role they played, they made a difference in the kids' lives, in their colleagues' lives. It's a humbling experience to know that we have that many folks that have worked relentlessly to truly do what's on the wall, to support every student every day. And we're all extremely grateful for them. Next, I want to shift gears a little bit, and we want to give you an update on where we are with our adoption of the social studies instructional materials. And we have Director Angie Neville of Cricut and Instruction here tonight to take us through our process.
Good evening. So, like Josh said, tonight's presentation is to inform you about the progress that we've made towards social studies adoption, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. When we do an adoption, we adhere very closely to Policy 2020 and 2020R. And this graphic just kind of shows some of the different committees that we go through as part of the adoption process. So we start with an instructional materials committee that includes stakeholders from across the district. That committee gets, first starts with approving the rubric that we use to score the different submissions that vendors bring to us, and also approves the, what we call the DCDC, which is the District Curriculum Development Committee. And that team includes about 20 educators, those who will be most impacted by the, by the adoption. And they are the team that looks at all the submissions, scores them, and decides what needs to be piloted next. In this case, we have actually four different DCDCs. We started with a 4th through 12th, because we were just looking at adopting materials from 4th grade through 12th grade. And then we, I'll talk a little bit more about kind of some of the different processes that we've gone through, but we ended up splitting that into a new, three different DCDCs, a K3, a middle school, and a high school. Once it goes to the pilot team, the pilot is not necessarily DCDC members, but there are different teachers across the district from different regions. And they also score the materials using specific criteria. And then it goes, those scores go back to the DCDC for them to make a recommendation, which goes to the, back to the IMC committee. If the IMC committee approves, then it goes to our superintendent and finally makes its way to you.
Can I ask a quick question? I noticed that the 4th and 5th graders don't seem to be reflected in that K12 middle school and high school. I'm just wondering why?
So the 4th through, so the first DCDC committee was 4th through 12th. So it's 4th.
I thought you then divided it into three groups and had, okay, got it.
So, yeah. And I'll talk just a minute about what we decided about 4th and 5th, and why we ended up making a new committee that was K through 3.
Okay, that's perfect. I'd love to hear that.
So this is kind of a graphic that explains what's happened over the last few years as part of this process. In 2019, the state came out with new social studies standards. They had been promising those for a number of years, so we were really excited to see those new standards. We brought together a large group of educators that included teachers from K through 12, some administrators and district people. And we went through the standards alignment process to choose priority standards. We know that there are many standards in each of the different content areas. And so over the last three or four years, we've gone through each of the different content areas to prioritize standards, to make it reasonable for teachers and students to be able to spend a significant amount of time and energy on those standards that we feel are the highest priority. So we went through that process back in 2019, 2020. And, and then we paused a little bit, because that was the year that we ended up going out and COVID started. And so then, we came back in 2020 and 2021. We, as part of the process, we looked at the current social studies adopted materials, which are quite old, to see how they aligned with our new standards and especially with our new priority standards. And we found at that time that they really were not adequate to support students in meeting those standards. And so at that point, we began the adoption process. Like I said, like the graphic before, it went to the IMC committee and so on and so forth. When it went to the IMC committee, they did approve the DCDC that we had put together. That's those 20 educators that actually score submissions. It went through a request for proposals process. So we put that out there, vendors submitted their different programs, the DCDC scored those programs, and then they, at that point, they determined which programs we wanted to pilot. And still, we're still in that 4th through 12th. So in that initial DCDC, in that initial RFP, it was just 4th grade on up. In the past, we haven't done anything with K through 3 in terms of adopted social studies materials forever. I, I know I've been in the district seven years. I talked to a lot of different people who have been in the district a lot longer than I have. And my understanding is that 4th grade on up is where we had adopted materials. K through 3 primarily had books that they incorporated into their literacy program to have discussion around themes, but there were no adopted materials at K through 3. This year, we took those, piloted the materials that they decided, the DCDC decided to move on to the pilot phase. And we began training teachers, getting the materials in place, and piloting with teachers out in the field and students in their classrooms. Those started, like I said, in the fall. They went through February, and then at that point, those pilot teachers scored the materials that they were able to pilot in their classrooms. And that went then in February to the DCDC. They took a look at the scores that the pilot teachers had given to the materials. And at that point, the only program that they felt was worthy of adoption were the materials for 4th and 5th grade. So, because we didn't have anything to move forward with middle school or high school, but we had this really great program for 4th and 5th grade, it was suggested that maybe we want to look at piloting the same program with K through 3. And it was decided that that was a good idea. So we wanted to go back to our policy. So we had to put a DCDC in place for K through 3 to determine, again, to score and to determine whether it made sense to pilot. And, and those same, that same group of people would then take the scores from the pilot teachers and determine whether we now not only want to adopt 4 and 5, but we also want to adopt all the way down to kindergarten. That pilot was, the DCDC was put in place, the pilot teachers were put in place and recruited and trained, and then they began the pilot in April at K through 3. They finished that pilot at the end of May. They scored those materials. It went to the DCDC for them to review the results. They determined that they felt like this was a strong enough, a strong enough material to look at the adoption for K through 5. And the, there was a recommendation to the IMC that we adopt this material, this program that's called Inquire Ed Journeys across the elementary grades. In June, we're up to now, we took this to Superintendent Garcia. We are doing the update about where we've been to you. And we also have posted on our public website, an overview of the materials. There's a video, there's a, a handout that's, shows, dips into three different grade levels and shows what the different units look like. So there, our community and our staff out in the field are also given an opportunity to give us feedback about the materials and what they, what they think and what we should consider if we move forward with the adoption. And then finally, next month, we'll be bringing the decision to you, a chance for you to vote of whether we want to adopt these materials K through 5 or not. If you should choose to move it forward, then we would begin planning for PD and adoption to actually begin in September. And, and we would roll it out next year and, and support our students and teachers in that way. Great. So a little bit about the materials themselves. So like I said, the name of the program is called Inquire Ed Journeys, and it's an inquiry-based social studies program. And each grade level has anywhere between 2 to 4 units. Most grade levels have 3. And it begins by launching the unit with some kind of a compelling question. And that could, I've given you a couple examples, like how can we use wisdom from the past to build a better future? Another compelling question could be something like, "How can we work together for the good of the community?" So this big overarching question is how each unit starts. And then the students engage in an exploration or an inquiry into that question. So there are resources that the teacher makes available for the students, giving them access to different kinds of learning around that content to help to inform their thinking around that compelling question. That, those materials could have anything to do with history, or civics, or economics, or geography, depending on the standards for that grade level. And then finally, the, each unit ends with what's called a call to action, or some kind of a culminating project. There are a list of, of projects or products that a teacher or students could decide that they want to do to show what they learned as part of this, as part of the unit. I've included a couple of pictures from the pilots. These are kinder and first graders. One of the most exciting things that we, that we feel about this program is the amount of collaboration that students are engaged with as they go through this learning experience. You can see there are lots of, of books that are used as a springboard for discussion. Students down in the corner there, those first graders, had to create a treehouse and to collaboratively come up with rules that they would want to use for that treehouse. And then they did a presentation to their peers about that. And that, that was all about fairness, that unit had to do with fairness. In the bottom corner, you can see kids drawing self-portraits, thinking about kind of their own selves and where they fit within the community, whether that community is in the classroom or the broader community. And in the, up in the corner there, you can see a poster that the students collaboratively came up with about citizens' rights and responsibilities. In 2nd grade, they did some work around in innovations. And so again, lots of, lots of pictures of kids collaborating, working together to problem solve and to think about the content. And, and this picture in 3rd grade, their unit was on global connections, and kids had to identify some global issues. And their culminating project at the end was to think about a global issue, but to take it down to the community level. So thinking about how it might impact them. For example, one group of kids talked about how they really felt like the books in the library needed to be more diverse. And so they created a poster advocating for more diverse books in their library. So those are the kinds of projects that students are engaged in. Sometimes the projects are shared at a broader level, like they may be creating posters that would go in businesses around the community. So really trying to think beyond just their own learning, but really sharing their learning with a broader audience. This one, this slide is just showing the criteria that was used for the scoring. You can see that there are six different categories. First, they look at the alignment to standards, especially the priority standards. And in social studies, there's a national framework called the C3 Framework. And it really emphasizes that inquiry-based model for social studies learning. And so we evaluated how closely these materials were in alignment with the framework. They looked at strategies and supports within the program, what kind of assessments could they use that were embedded, that were tied to standards. They used a rubric that comes from OSPI, or parts of a rubric that comes from OSPI about bias. And finally, they looked at technology and accessibility. In this case, this program, while the teachers access it through an online platform, students, it's not an app for, so just the teacher is accessing the materials online. Although many of the books and things like that are, can be projected, so the teacher might utilize those resources and use them with technology, but the kids aren't necessarily getting on there. On the other hand, teachers are welcome to take some of those, our schoolagey courses, and students can interact, but the teacher kind of facilitates that or uses that. You can also see that each of these different scoring areas were scored on a scale from 1 to 10. And anything, really, anything above a 6 was considered a possibility for adoption, because 6s and 7s were close to meeting. Our standards are pretty broad, and the one area that we found that very few published programs would meet is our tribal sovereignty, especially from a local perspective, because these, you know, these programs are national programs. So there would naturally be possibly some areas that were not addressed as part of these programs. And so we felt like even 6s and 7s could still be a possibility for an actual adoption. And here you see an average score for the initial pilot, which was 4th and 5th grade. We had 20 teachers who piloted at 10 different schools, and it impacted 611, 611 students. And the scores below, you can see, are from each of the different categories. You'll notice that the scores for technology and accessibility were fairly low, and that is because the sub-criteria that's under the technology and accessibility was, because it wasn't designed specifically for this program, we used the same rubric for many different programs. It talked a lot about students accessing the technology, students engaging with the technology. And because in this program, students don't interact with the program. And because in this program, students don't interact with the program itself, that got lower scores because of that. But I think the team felt that um, that we really want to see kids engaging with each other as much as with the technology. And in this case, we really felt like this, this program is very strong in terms of student engagement and collaboration with each other. And the technology didn't um, wasn't as critical. In the K through three um, program or the K through three pilot, we had 53 teachers who piloted at 21 different schools, impacting more than a thousand students. Um, you'll see their scores up at that top row there. They also scored sixes and sevens for this. Um, so not as, not quite as high of scores as the fourth and fifth grade, but we did feel strongly that, and they felt strongly that um, this program still had a lot of benefits and value. Um, and that we could supplement with a few different pieces that would be easy to do to make this as um, as robust and comprehension, comprehensive as we needed it to be. One of the things um, that I know that you all have been working very hard on is the anti-racist policy that you've been drafting. And so I wanted to take a look at that policy to see how this curriculum might um, be in alignment with what it is that you are um, you know, that you're emphasizing and after in terms of curriculum and instruction. Um, and we've really felt, uh, really felt like after reading the policy, policy quite closely, that this program um, would meet the expectations that you have for that. Um, it definitely, the content is very age-appropriate in terms of social studies, the standards themselves, because it is so in alignment with the standards. Um, and that it really does a great job of presenting history from multiple perspectives and um, and not, and doing it in such a way that it's lifting up the positives and then saying at the same time, there are absolutely areas to work on and that um, our students need to know about all of that and to be able to make their own um, decisions and their own um, thoughts around that. Um, so that's definitely part of this program. And in addition to that, you'll see some of the different practices that are part of this program, including um, using cultural learning styles and tools, um, using instructional approaches that um, mirror many different groups that are represented as part of our demographics. Um, that it gives teachers ideas on how to deal um, with difficult, sometimes difficult issues with sensitivity um, and awareness. Um, so we really felt like there's many different aspects of this program that can support um, the policy.
And uh, for those that are watching at home, we're, we're aware that tonight's your first reading of your policy and not that there, so we looked at the intent as we were going through this to make sure that we were trying to track and we didn't miss an opportunity. And so we recognize that the policy could change, it could go in different directions. But I think that it was very important with something like social studies is that we paused enough in our process to recognize it, where's the intent of this policy going and doesn't meet those? And so I wanted to thank Director Neville for that in there.
And then, so finally, um, I did want to touch on six through 12 since we've been talking about elementary so much. Um, we, when we submitted or had the RFP, the requests for proposals submissions, um, we did end up piloting a few different programs, but nothing made it past the pilot phase. Um, it really was not as strong as we would have hoped it would be. So we went back to the drawing board and we have been looking at some other materials that um, that we feel might have a stronger impact. We've looked at um, open educational resources, which are free resources. A lot of times um, we don't get those as submissions in an RFP because there's not a big company behind it who's um, you know, submitting. So we have been looking at um, open educational resources. We've also been looking at some other strong um, material that is out there. And at the middle school level, we have identified at least one program that we are excited about. Um, it has already been vetted through the DCDC and made it to the pilot phase. So we'll begin piloting those materials in the fall. Um, and then we are also looking at the possibility, the same materials at elementary school, this Inquire Ed um, has, is working on a middle school curriculum. And so it will be ready in January. So we're looking at the possibility of piloting that one as well. We feel pretty confident between those two that we think we might have a viable option um, for middle, for the middle school level. Um, with high school, um, oh, so the, the um, program that we're looking at piloting in the fall is called Educurious. Um, and I think in the Friday report that I gave you, that there were some links to there, so you could check that out a little bit more deeply if you'd like. Um, at high school, we really haven't found anything that we love yet. So we continue to explore what's out there. There are lots of materials out there that are not um, that are strong, but it's only a single unit rather than a comprehensive course. And so our, we're just kind of grappling with, do we find, we wait and find something that is more comprehensive? Or do we look at a suite of different units and figure out a way to tie those together in a, in a way that would make sense? So our plan is for next year to really dig deeply into that um, and really look at, see what would be the, our best options. And um, hopefully, this time next year, we'll have a middle school and a high school curriculum to bring um, to you for adoption as well.
Okay.
And the only other thing, la- last slide, I just want to thank the many, many schools um, who had pilot teachers who have been part of this process. And as you can see, there are quite a few of them and we um, couldn't do it without them. So we really appreciate their help.
So tonight, we're not asking for any action. We wanted to front-load with as much information as possible. We also know that the timing is critical. And so as uh, Angie mentioned, there is uh, opportunities for the community to learn more on the public website and ask questions. We would be potentially bringing you a recommendation in July. I'll pause there and see if you have any questions before I shift gears and wrap up real quickly.
Anyone have any questions, Dr. Leon, do you have questions?
Uh, yeah, um, I was just curious about the, you mentioned some of the difficulties of finding something for the high school level. Um, I mean, it's just, uh, is it part of this is because, I mean, there's, everybody takes different classes in high school, right? So are you looking for something longitudinal that fits into which classes? How do you get that in there versus like you said, a one class? If it's, you know, the, the history classes per se, which might naturally fit into, and everybody takes history all four years. And it sounds it's been difficult to find something that's meeting everybody's needs. But is there something that's still good, right? The enemy of good is perfect, some people say. So at some point, making a move um, on a curriculum that may not be perfection for everybody. So um, it sounds like we're, we're opening this up for the community to give some input. Uh, and like hearing that you're looking at open educational resources. As you said, they're not being pushed to us by a company, so we have to go out and look and find those. So um, I don't know if there's a, there's not really a question wrapped in there. I think it's just more of a comment, but it just sounds like, hopefully we can make, find something that is uh, fits with our, um, our work uh, around um, equity specifically um, and truth-telling and having kids learn how to ask critical questions.
Absolutely. And I think a lot of times when new standards come out, um, especially if there's a significant shift in the standards, which there were in this case, um, it takes a while for the publishing companies to get caught up with us. And we found that with both Common Core and, and GSS. So um, we're seeing the same kind of thing with social studies as well. Um, you know, publishers are scrambling to kind of design new materials that might meet these new standards. It sometimes takes a little while for them to get there.
So adding to that complexity is Washington State is not a large customer in the national in there. So um, we, we will continue to struggle in the area of social studies where Common Core has standards that are consistent more across America. So you can have this mass volume.
Mm-hmm.
Director Leon, you hit on some other complexities of, you know, we have advanced programs. IB has set materials, recommendations, AP, college and the high school. And so there's a tremendous amount of diversity uh, in some of those. And some of that is good in the sense of it, it may even be more advanced in our intent where the traditional single curriculum for a class that all students take may not. So those are all reasons and we were very disciplined about trying not to just go get something uh, if it wasn't the right fit. So more work to be done.
So thank you for your patience, all of you. And I think that, you know, it is, we will find the sweet spot and, and, and when the time comes, we'll adopt it. So Vice President Keating.
I just have a follow-up question. Um, so I know that throughout the publishing industry, that COVID has had a significant impact. And so I would imagine, and I guess I'm just asking, um, if that has played a role in terms of the industry catching up with the standards and the COVID impacts that continue to ripple through all industries and even the publishing industry.
Yeah, I absolutely believe that's true.
Thank you.
Director Stroger, okay. Thank you so much, um, Director Neville, for your time and energy and focus on this. And it was a very thorough report, so thank you, Superintendent.
Madam President, I will go fast. Uh, I just want to uh, thank everyone. We had a whirlwind uh, last week of graduations and uh, with a wonderful celebration on Tuesday night of the Willie Stewart Academy. Uh, 10 or 12 formal ceremonies, including our community-based transition in a, in a matter of seven or eight days. Um, thank you to all the staff that participated. But I do want to take a special moment to shout out to our PIO team. They were not the only ones in all of the, the uh, uh, ceremonies, but they were consistently there and uh, made available and accessible the ceremonies to all families that could watch. There are a number of photographs online if those families would like to see them. And so big shout out to them. I do want to uh, very quickly thank all of our staff uh, for an amazing year. It has not been easy. We've been through whirlwinds. Um, they have stuck with us, stepped up and stepped in whenever necessary. Um, the work is not done. Um, schools do not just magically stop now that school's out. We have teams of folks, whether it's custodial and maintenance and office staff that are working year-round. And so um, please, if you're out there, try to get a moment to breathe, uh, to get some rest. Families, if you need meals, if you need resources over the summertime, please go onto the website, there is locations of those meals. Um, if you're interested in summer learning opportunities, there is um, Tacoma Learns, community partners that are doing summer learning opportunities. And with that, I want to uh, say uh, it's been a good 2021, 22 school year. I gotta remember even the year. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Um, on item nine, staff report to the board. We, 9.1, we have a budget update from our CFO.
Hello, thank you. Well, there we go. Uh, I just wanted to, I'm actually excited about our progress. We are getting closer to getting through to adopting our budget for 22, 23 school year. And I want to remind the public that the school board has set a framework for us and these are our guiding principles that were defined by our school board. We'll be utilizing these and making all of our decisions as we process through our budget. And a reminder for the public as well, that we are in our budget light year. We do a two-year budget cycle and we align ourselves to the um, state's legislative cycle. This is the off-year of that. And so we just make minor modifications to our budget in light of any kind of legislative or other internal impacts that we're experiencing. I had talked with you previously, a couple of months ago, about some of the impacts that we um, saw through legislative impacts, legislative uh, action. Uh, just a quick reminder, those things were enrollment stabilization funding and some, some new prototypical allocation enhancements for social, excuse me, physical, social and emotional supports, as well as other um, impacts to the way that we get funded in our day-to-day, as well as wage and benefit increases. So we've seen all of those come through and we are making adjustments and modifications on our budget in light of all of those legislative changes that we saw this year. Moving into 22, 23, as we've processed through the budget um, in this cycle, we've identified some internal impacts that we have to account for. And those look like revenue impacts. So our enrollment has remained in a lower state, so we have enrollment fluctuations to manage to. We've had some modest increases, as I mentioned on the previous slide, around the state and legislature. We have the community eligibility program. So we've applied to participate in a program that provides free meals to all of our students ongoing outside of the National School Meal Lunch Program that has been um, providing all of our free meals. This is a new program, will receive federal funding and we will no longer be charging students for meals in our future year. This is very exciting, uh, but something we have to address in our budget. We also have other annual cost increases. Uh, people are moving up on the salary schedule as they take uh, one step to the next step from year to year. We have cost and inflation increases for insurance, gasoline, other inflationary adjustments. The cost of food continues to increase. Uh, other changing laws, uh, similar, similar types of things that we've experienced in the past would be minimum wage adjustments or paid family medical leave adjustments. We actually do have some of those this time. And negotiated salary uh, changes is another item that we would have to account for on an annual basis. Some new items coming into effect this year. We have uh, some grants that we've received for our maritime program. We'll be exploring on what that program is going to look like, as well as the physical, social and emotional supports, PSES, that we are going to be accounting for. So just to give you some highlights of what we're seeing. But as we've put all those adjustments and modifications into our budget, uh, and I recognize that this says draft, it means draft. We're still in the final phases of double-checking our numbers and calculations and making sure that we got everything that we intended to get into the budget for this year. Uh, our revenues would look like 471,452,772 um, thousand dollars, million dollars. I don't know what I just said. 571,452,1772 dollars. Uh, that's actually about 17.5 million dollars more in revenue than we had in prior years. Some of that is from the legislature, some of that is from our SRF funds. Uh, some of that's from other, other resources as well. And our expenditures would be slated at 598,543,984 dollars, which is an increase of about 11 million dollars from prior years. And the things that I listed on this page here uh, would be primarily accounting for what those types of impacts are. Our fund balance drawdown then would be 27,91,200, 91,212 dollars. Uh, that's actually a decrease from what we planned on using in the current year. This current year, we had anticipated, we might need 35 million dollars to balance our budget using our fund balance resources. We've not used that, we don't anticipate that we're going to use the majority of that. And so we're going to roll that into this next year and utilize it there. We want to make sure that we're spending our fund balance resources on the students that are in the system now. And so that's the intent behind that. But I do want to say, as we talk about the fund balance, we intend to maintain our 5% reserve as required by the board. We should not need to dip into that in any way, shape or form, even though we're going to use around 27 million dollars to balance the budget. And that those resources in that 27 million include our typical program carryover. We would utilize some fund balance in any year, regardless of where we're at and in other circumstances. Um, and that it would help to limit disruptions in current programs, as well as help to smooth out where we're at as we soften the enrollment declines over the next year um, and some of the other inflationary impacts. So with that, we just have a couple more touchpoints on our budget. Before we adopt, we will be launching a video series, as well as our budget calculator, beginning June 30th. Uh, we will have a July 14th public budget hearing. And then we anticipate an adoption on August 11th. Uh, we have to adopt by August 31st by state law uh, for our size of district. And that would give us about six good weeks of having finalized budget data for people to have an, an opportunity to participate in, in engagement. Uh, whether they would participate in the videos, the calculator, the hearing, or just regularly emailing us and asking us questions, or whatever that might look like. So that's my budget update for this evening.
Thank you so much. Um, Rosalind, does, does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, as always thorough, thanks so much. We'll look, we'll look forward to what happens, everything between now and our next meeting in July. All right, so item number 10, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@tacoma.k12.wa.us. We have two options. The first one is an in-person open meeting option. The general counsel will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there's a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. And then the second option is a written option. So I'll turn it to the general counsel and you can tell us if we have anyone in the audience who's interested in speaking in person.
Yes, thank you. We do have one verbal comment tonight. It's Kimmy Ginn, who's speaking on our draft anti racism policy.
Hey, thanks.
Good evening. Good to see everyone, board of directors, Superintendent Garcia. Before I make comment on the anti racist policy, I want to say I was at the equity healing that Amanda talked about. It was excellent. And being a community activist on equity policies, the work is hard and heavy. And I have to say, coming out of that equity healing process, I feel pretty good today. So I want to say thank you to Justina and Amanda and Janice for all their hard work putting it together. And it was nice also reconnecting with folks I haven't seen over the year, especially with COVID and things like that. It was nice to be in person. I also want to thank the University of Puget Sound for opening up their campus. The food was great, the logistics of going from class to class for breakout. The opening session was outstanding with Jean Tagman, who brought us through a Native American spiritual opportunity to kind of set the tone for really making us feel comfortable and aware of all that we've gone through, through the COVID pandemic and where we can go, how we can go forward. So just kudos to your staff here for that. I want, I want to talk about a poet that I think is germane to what I wanted to say very briefly tonight. Her name is Maya Angelou. Unfortunately, she's no longer with us, but her spirit remains truly with me. Because I resonate with a lot of things that she said. And she joined forces with Oprah Winfrey years ago. And she wrote a poem called Call Their Names. So I'm calling your name, Enrique. I'm calling your name, Lisa. I'm calling your name, Elizabeth. I'm calling your name, Cory and Chelsea, who's not here. I just want to say, I sat in virtually when you did the study session, talking about policies. And the fact that I believe it was Chelsea that brought forward and Cory sort of backed her up on that initially. And then all of you came in course. The fact that we can talk about harassment, we can talk about discrimination, but the fact that your district is going to the next step saying truly talking about anti racism is phenomenal. It's a vanguard. I hope more school boards take a look at what Tacoma Public Schools is doing. As you know, I am the director for vibrant schools. Our mission is to eliminate the educational disparities for students of color and those impacted by poverty here in Tacoma Public Schools in Clover Park. And you've watched the news. Vibrant Schools has been very active at Clover Park and there's a whole different situation when I'm across the, across the Pierce County out there in Lakewood. So it's refreshing and it's encouraging. And I'm passionate to say that Tacoma Public Schools is doing the right thing. And so I encourage you, as you look at this first reading of the anti racism policy, that you continue with the spirit that you did in that study session. I have the privilege and the honor, and I'm just excited that I sit on your equity review team. I know we're going to be taking a look at it coming up here in the next few weeks. So with all of that input and all the critical eyes and all the passion that goes into that, I call your name. Enrique, Lisa, Elizabeth, Cory and Chelsea, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimmy. Appreciate that. And we don't, do we have any written comments?
No further verbal comment and there's no written comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, item 11, the consent agenda.
I move to adopt.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda or comments? Hearing none, we will move on to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda is approved four to zero. So on to the topic at hand, policy matters. And 12.1 is the first reading of our brand new policy 1600 anti racism.
The district's general counsel recommends that the board review the draft proposal of new policy 1600 and provide feedback before a second reading. And I've invited our soon to be general counsel, Malik Benrow, to come up as he worked on this latest iteration of incorporating feedback from the last study session into this first draft.
Yes, real briefly, President Brom bright and directors. What we did is we took, tried to synthesize the information that was shared at the last study session. We had the opportunity, Superintendent, Josh, I had also the opportunity to meet with some student groups to get some student feedback. I know the President Brom bright and potentially others as well, met with some community folks to get their thoughts. So we've incorporated both the comments that were made at the study session in June and we are in May. And we also incorporated that community feedback. We also incorporated the student feedback. So what you see before you doesn't have the red lines between the last one and this one. It's the updated information on a clean copy. If you have feedback that you would like to give us after this first reading, when we come back to you for a second reading, you'll then see the red lines that'll show the difference between what's presented here and then what the second reading might look like in July. If there's any questions, happy to address. Otherwise.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you, Malik, for your incredible dedication on this particular issue and working with us. And it has been, I know we have had you whirling and twirling. And so I appreciate the hard time, the hard work you've put in and the time to get us to this point. I'd like to just sort of ask the group here who, you know, you've seen, did you, any of you have any comments or thoughts? This is, as Malik said, this is a compilation of the work we did at our, at our previous hearings. And for the public, this is a first reading, but it has taken months for us to get here. This is, we put as a, as a board, we've put a lot of commitment. This was originally brought to us as a topic by Director Stroger at our first retreat in March, begging a question that he, that he encouraged us to answer about what we were doing or what could we do to make Tacoma Public Schools a more anti racist institution? And it started a cavalry, cavalry, cavalry road of conversation around this topic that has just been incredibly enlightening. And so thank you again, Director Stroger, for bringing the topic to head and for everyone else for diving into this meaningfully. And so I have to say, the staff has been incredibly supportive. And so what we have here is a first reading. And I know you've had a chance to look at it, but again, we have plenty of time and we are going to get asked for public comment. But is, did anyone want to make any comments about what they saw or anything in particular that you wanted to bring up before about at this point?
The only thing I would add is that I appreciate how well the, the conversation we had at the last board meeting and the conversations that led us, or not the board meeting, excuse me, the last study session around this, like this. You and your team did an excellent job of capturing what I believe was the essence and the, the key points of what we were dialoguing through during the, during that study session and since the board retreat. And so I just, I really am grateful to the, the deep commitment to this policy.
And actually, I'd also like to say to General Counsel True Blood, who has been a champion of policy shifts and helped us build the equity policy review team and that led to all of this. It's been a, you know, sort of building blocks for the past two years. So Renee, thank you so much. And I know this is sort of bittersweet because I love you two. You're both gonna, Malik's gonna step right in and, and take this over. But I know we will also miss you at the desk, but knowing that you're here still in HR, we will have an opportunity to continue to pick your brain on, on these critical issues. So thank you for all of the work and leadership that you showed, have shown.
Thank you very much. And in my new role, I'll be the district's civil rights coordinator. And so this will, will have great meaning in my, my new role as well.
And one of the things I wanted to say about this draft, that we brought it up at the study session, but for those of you that didn't pay, didn't attend, you know, stream, the, watch the stream of the study session. What I think we wanted to get across, especially in this, this particular policy, is that there are statements of what we believe, because it's really intentional that we want to change the trajectory and the process. And it takes a declaration of belief and commitment to that belief. And this group has been, this, this board has been amazing to work with. We've been, and I, I think, again, a minor miracle, but the staff listened to us talk for hours on end about this topic. And then I know that Renee, you had a big hand in putting this into capturing exactly what we wanted to say and putting it into the belief statements that really, you know, are making this become a reality for this school district. And hopefully will be a model for, for others to come. So I wanted to make sure that both Malik and Renee really heard how much we appreciate the work that you're doing. And, and I know that the superintendent and team are going to have an even harder time when it comes to implementing it, because it's going to be just more work to figure out where the, what we need to do to make that happen.
So Madam President, I would just want to remind the public too, is that there is still opportunity for you to provide feedback. And you do that under the policy manual. On the right hand side of the column, there is a section there. It would tell you currently what the policy that we're reviewing and there's a place to submit. You're also welcome to give public comment or written comment in that fashion, but we are constantly collecting that. So there is still time to bring your voice and we will continue to reach out and to folks. But please feel free the need. If you have any other insights, we'll collect that and we'll bring recommendations accordingly.
Okay. Yeah. Director Leon?
Yeah. So again, thank you so much to Malik, you and your team and the board, as you said. I mean, this has been an important work. I think it's just important also as the community reviews this to, to look at the common definitions, like the definitions we believe are accurate and real as we talk about this issue. Because people can make up things in the world, right? But we are, we're saying that these are the definitions we're using to, to describe what racism is and how we want to eliminate it, right? So one of our comments is support addressing, eliminating racism. What's one of our? Supporting, addressing and eliminating racism is one of the paragraphs we have in here. So addressing is one thing and eliminating is the goal, of course. So.
Thank you. All right. So thank you, Malik. We will see you back at a future board meeting to, for a second reading. And in the meantime, we really encourage the public and our community partners and staff and students, everyone to go onto the website, as Superintendent Garcia said. And there's a form there that's super easy to use and I think would be the best place. But if you want to submit a letter for, for us, to us, or show up at the next meeting, all of it is welcome. Thank you so much. All right. Item 13, financial report. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for August 2022. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district's website at https colon forward slash forward slash www.tacomaschools.org forward slash departments forward slash business and finance. The next item is item 14, curriculum instruction. Am I, Zeke Edman coming up to the podium here? The first one is 14.1, approval of contract number TSD 22 dash 130 between Character Strong and the Tacoma Public Schools from May 2nd, 2022 to May 1st, 2024.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, on behalf of the Director of Whole Child, recommends the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD dash 22 dash 130 between Character Strong and Tacoma Public Schools from May 2nd, 2022 to May 1st, 2024. Funding source, Esser.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Does anyone have any questions for Zeke about this particular contract? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Item 14.2, approval to purchase Discovery Educational, Inc. Learning application for the 2022, 2023 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchase of Discovery Ed Learning Application for the 2022, 23 school year in the amount of 243,101 dollars, 20 cents, inclusive of sale tax and shipping. Funding source, Esser.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.2.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Item 14.3, approval to purchase iReady Learning Application for the 2022 dash 2023 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchase of iReady Reading Learning Application for the 2022, 23 school year in the amount of 294,088 dollars, inclusive of sales tax and shipping. Funding source, Esser.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.3.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And any questions or comments on this particular item? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. 14.4, approval to purchase New Zella Learning Application for 2022, 2023 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of New Zella Learning Application for the 2022, 23 school year in the amount of 332,212 dollars and 57 cents, inclusive of sales tax and shipping. Funding source, Esser.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. And any questions or comments on this issue?
Questions?
Yep.
Just a little description on New Zella, is it?
New Zella, I guess.
New Zella. Describe a little bit of how it helps teaching.
Definitely. So New Zella is a text based. One of the earlier ones was Discovery Ed is more of a multimedia based. And they're learning platforms that allow the teacher go in, they're embedded in school logis so they can assign to kids. They're differentiated and scaffolded. So depending on where students are in their learning curve, in the case of New Zella, I can assign rich text culturally relevant to their reading level, still tied to our content. I could even enrich and advance for kids that are ready to move on and push forward. I can engage in conversation, use it as an assessment piece for comprehension. There's kind of multiple ways.
Cool.
What age, what grades is it for? Is it all grades?
New Zella, I believe starts at second and goes up.
Okay.
And Discovery Ed goes K-12.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. All right. Thank you, Zeke. Item 15, business matters. 15.1, approval of contract number TSD dash 22 dash 144 between Relife School and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2023.
The Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends the Board of Directors approve contract number 22 dash 144 between Relife School and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023. Funding source, Student Services.
I move to adopt item 15.1.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Item 15.2, approval of contract number TSD dash 22 dash 153 between Kelo and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2023.
The Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD dash 22 dash 153 between Kelo and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt.
And a second. It's been moved in second. And any questions on this item or? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Pass four to zero. Item 15.3, approval of acceptance of Lincoln Tree Farm Mobile Home Donation from the estate of Donald and Donna J. Christian.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the donation of a mobile home located at the Lincoln Tree Farm property valued at 170,000 dollars from the estate of Donald and Donna J. Christian.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 15.3.
Thank you. It's been moved.
I will second.
Yep. It's been moved in second. And do we have any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. And just to thank you again to the, to the family of the Christian family. And it was great to have them here today to honor them. We so appreciate it, the gift that that just keeps giving. So thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Item 15.4, approval of contract number TSD dash 22 dash 115 between Seneca Family of Agencies and Tacoma Public Schools from April 1st, 2022 to March 31st, 2024.
The Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Whole Child, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD dash 22 dash 115 between Seneca Family of Agencies and the Tacoma Public number T S D dash two two dash one one five between Seneca Family of Agencies and the Tacoma Public Schools from April first, 2022 through March thirty first, 2024.
Do you have a motion?
I move to adopt fifteen point four.
Okay, it's been moved.
I second.
And seconded. Anyone have any questions or comments on this one? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Item fifteen point five, approval of school bus purchases.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends the purchase of six diesel buses. Funding source, Transportation Vehicle Fund.
I move to adopt item fifteen point five.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions or comments on this item?
Question.
Yes, Director Leon?
Wondering, is there any support coming from the state to go to electric vehicles in the future, school buses?
Yeah, electric buses are starting to make a little bit more of a dent. Up to this point, this was the first year we actually had an electric bus on the state contract. And we have to buy all of our, required by law to buy all of our buses off of our state contract. So it hadn't been an option prior to this year. We did do an investigation and there's a number of grants that are available to start bringing in electricity as part of your collection of buses. But the, the costs are pretty prohibitive at this point, as most new technology is. And so we'll continue to analyze as we progress through. I think another implication that we have to really consider is the infrastructure of our current location does not provide us an opportunity to, we're not going to get permits from the city for, for the location that we're currently at. And so I think that as we look to the future as to what our options are, that that's a consideration for that.
So as we look to the future, maybe getting support from the city in addition to, I mean, because eventually we need to start thinking about using, having a fleet of electric buses when the, when the financing comes.
That will continue to investigate over probably a number of years.
I think there's a great opportunity for city municipalities to come together in partnership and, and build that infrastructure collectively. Like, we all don't need different charging stations and all the things. So we'll have to strategically move in that direction. And so we've already started those conversations. We're excited about that opportunity. But in this situation, we still need buses now. And it, it's not a viable option for us at this point.
Sounds like a long-term partnership for J Mac.
Director Stroger has been edging in this direction.
You got it.
Yeah. I, I do think that one more comment would be that these are clean diesel buses, which is a little bit, it's an upgrade over a regular diesel bus that has a higher emissions burn to it.
Good.
All right. Thank you, Roslin.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And anyone have any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Okay, item fifteen point six, approval of BTU Direct LLC doing businesses BTU Mechanical to provide kitchen equipment, refrigeration repair, maintenance and inspection service.
The Chief Operator Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate an award contract for district-wide kitchen equipment, refrigeration repair, maintenance and inspection services to BTU Mechanical.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt fifteen point six.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Item fifteen point seven, approval to negotiate and award a design-build alternative method contract with Abner Construction Company for the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle Phase Two.
Yes, this is a continuation of our security upgrades across the district. Now we're entering to phase two with additional sites. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate an award for design-build contract to actual construction for phase two of the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle.
I move to adopt item fifteen point seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? All right. It passes four to zero. Item fifteen point eight, thank you, Chris, approval of contract extension with Blue Granite for the data warehouse project.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the funding request to continue work on the data warehouse and continue the migration of existing data to the new H R and finance systems. Funding source, Technology Levy Funds.
Excellent. Do you have a motion for this?
I move to adopt fifteen point eight.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes four zero. Thank you, Ed.
Thanks.
All right. Other business sixteen, item sixteen, other business. Sixteen point one, ratification of the 2022, 2025 collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma Public School District Number Ten and the membership of the Tacoma Education Association. Tacoma Education Association of Educational Office Professionals and Tacoma Association of Public Schools Professionals and Technical Employees.
The Director of Labor Relations and Whole Educator Support on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors ratify the collective bargaining agreements between Tacoma School District Number Ten and the membership of the Tacoma Education Association, the Tacoma Association of Education Office Professionals and the Tacoma Association of Public Schools Professional and Technical Employees.
I move to adopt item sixteen point one.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item?
Yeah.
What?
I just think we should, I think we've mentioned it several times to celebrate the strong work from all of our staff that are in these labor unions and from your office to come together in such a, just a collegial manner to help kids and do it so early in the year. Nice work from everybody involved.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you to TA and the, and the district. Great, great work together.
Thank you. All right. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any extensions? Anyone opposed? Any, any extensions? Okay. Should this have been a roll call vote?
It's not a, it's not a resolution, but if you'd like for it to be a roll call vote, we can do it.
Um, it's fine.
I think we've already voted.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be. I just wanted to make sure, as I was saying, and I was thinking, hmm, ratification, maybe that's a roll call vote. All right. So it passes four zero. Congratulations, everyone. Great work, team.
Good. Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to echo Director Leon's president comments of, I just want to thank the teams. The folks that, that sit in that, those rooms all the way through the night, many long hours. It's not lost on me, the time and effort to try to find something that's respectful and responsible that helps students and staff live a fulfilling life. We're extremely grateful. And so we're grateful for our partners. We're grateful for everyone that sat in there and volunteered a lot of their time. And so it's not easy. So thank you to all those folks.
Awesome. Item sixteen point two, approval of Washington Interscholastic Activities Association, W I A A, membership renewal and school board resolution.
The Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of K-12 and the Director of Student Life recommends the Board of Directors approve the renewal of W I A membership for the 22, 23 school year. Funding source, Student Life.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have comments or questions on this item? Okay, hearing none. Is this the resolution or do we not, do we also, do we need a voice vote or?
This one is a resolution, and so I'll do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Starting with President Bonbright.
Aye.
Vice President Keating.
Aye.
Director Leon.
Aye.
And Director Stroger.
Aye.
Resolution passes four zero.
Thank you so much. Item sixteen point three, adoption of resolution number 2108, identifying authorized signers for district bank accounts.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 2108 and approve the updated list of employees who can authorize transaction on these accounts and authorize the superintendent and or designee to approve the plan.
I move to adopt item sixteen point three.
Second.
It's been moved and double seconded. Anyone have any questions or comments on this? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
I will do a resolution, roll call vote. Thank you. President Bonbright.
Aye.
Vice President Keating.
Aye.
Director Leon.
Aye.
And Director Stroger.
Aye.
The resolution passes four zero.
All right. Thank you. So that takes care of the, the business of the evening. And now comes the fun part where we, we sort of share things we've been doing in the community. So who wants to go first tonight?
I'll go.
Oh, we got J Mac. I'm gonna sit up.
Okay. All right. I was there. I was there. Just kidding.
I know he was.
I said I wasn't, but I was there. But I'm not gonna start with J Mac. We obviously had graduations. I had Sammy. I had Oakland. I had Stadium. Great time. Always fun, celebrating families, celebrating students as they, you know, rise to this accomplishment, get ready to move on to the next phase of their lives, whatever that may be. On the tenth, we all came together, J Mac, and we zeroed in on community wealth building. I feel like young people are the core of community wealth building. And it's our job to prepare them for and get them used to making money, not pocket change. We all know that money doesn't solve money problems, so we have to educate on money management, financial literacy. It's those pieces that make wealth building actually happen. Getting money is low-hanging fruit. Keeping money and creating wealth is the, is the topic that seems out of reach. So we, we had a great panel discussion about internships, CTE programs, and innovative ideas that are in the works to create career pathways for young people led by Adam Coolis from our own here in TPS, Katie Condit from Workforce Central, Tim Heron from Degrees of Change, and Leslie Barstow from The Port. They were a part of the panel, engaged us in some great discussion. And I'm excited to see what comes up out of that. If I forgot anything, the Chair of J Mac happens to be sitting to my right. And I'm sure she'll fill y'all in if I miss something.
Did a great job. Thank you so much. All right. Thanks so much, Director Stroger. Director Leon?
Yep, thanks. You've mentioned it a couple of times here already, but just congratulations to all students, not just the graduates, all the students that finished the year, the families, all the staff that supported them. It's, it's, it's still a tough times for the world, but you did a great job. So thank you for everybody supporting them. I was also at some graduations. Well, I'll hear about these, but I was at Soda and also Foss. And there were some very just emotional and passionate school student speakers, principals and superintendent that said a lot of just thoughtful things around equity going forward, working together. I mean, I can't wrap it all up in one statement. There were a lot of great things said, but it was just wonderful to hear the students in their own voice talk about their next foot forward. So, and I will mention again, the P I O or Public Information Office, Communications Department that was there. I got to chat with a bunch of them after the Foss graduation. That was the last one. And there were just some amazing, amazing, amazing work done there. There's at least one picture of every student, probably more, more like two per student and maybe some more for every family to look at as stills. And video, of course, of the whole event. So thanks for doing a great job supporting all those kids in their graduation. I was also at the Green Trike Children's Museum fundraiser this past weekend. Chelseaa spoke and had her step team perform. It was, they were amazing. So it was an excellent place for her to say some thoughtful things around after-school activities, importance of our partners through, through Green Trike there. So thanks for all those who support Green Trike too.
Thank you, Director Leon. All right. Vice President Keating.
All right. Well, I don't know. I feel like graduation is basically what we did since the last time we were all together. So I feel like I got to start with community-based transition graduation, which is really special and even more special in the auditorium that I actually performed in when I was in elementary school. So that was fun. But we're not going to talk about what year that was. So it was just, I, I just, I want to acknowledge the, the families and staff and students at CBT to get, to get those kids graduated was really, it's just really special. And I know that it was also a community effort as well. So our community partners help in their, those students' successes as well. And then there was two firsts. We got Tacoma Online's first graduation, which was amazing. And that was just really, felt really special, given the way that T O L came to life, the circumstances under the way T O L came to life, and how just the, the students, families, staff, like the system just embraced, like, hey, here's where we are and this is how we move forward. And so it felt really, it felt like a really special celebration to just oversee the graduation of T O L, the first graduating class of T O L. And then the other first was Silas, the very first graduating class of Dr. Dolores Silas High School. And as a Ram alum, that felt super good to be there. Go Rams. I know you're gonna end with go Apes, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say go, go Rams right now. But that was just really special. And I just also want to acknowledge Principal Bernadette Ray, because that was the graduating class that were freshmen when she started in her role as principal. So it was very, there was just a lot of really special things. And then as superintendent, as Josh mentioned, we got to close out with Willie Stewart on Tuesday. And Willie Stewart just feels like, I kind of wish that more of our students got to see and hear from our Willie Stewart graduates. It was really special, the things that these kids, these, these, that they've overcome and the way that they've chosen their own success to get across the stage. And we had a couple of babies come across the stage, which was super special. So I just want to end with that, because it felt from CBT through Willie Stewart, it was, it was really remarkable.
Yeah, well, thanks, everyone, for sharing. I guess I'll start with my graduation. This year only had one, but it was Mount Tahama. So it was awesome. T-Bird pride. It was a fabulous, I think it's our largest high school. Anyway, it was, it was a big crowd and they were loud. I have to say Superintendent Garcia got them going and was having the families compete with the students as to who could be louder. And it was earth-shattering, honestly. But it was great. And I think, you know, what, what they shared with their, about their experience and the, the student speakers, as well as just the joy in all of their faces. It's, it always is the best time of year. And just want to know that the juniors that are rising seniors, this too will be you next year. So stick with it, focus, and, but first have a great summer. Anyway, so to the students and the families at all these high schools, thank you so much for supporting our kids and our students and getting them through. And also, we heard about J Mac. The other couple of things I've done since the last board meeting was Foundation for Tacoma Students has, I'm on the board and they have a committee on racial equity and social justice. And they were looking at their own as a board, you know, how they're approaching equity and anti-racism. And I was able to present to them what we have done on our anti-racism policy. And they were very excited about that and enthusiastic to support the work. So that was, that was great. But yesterday I was, it wasn't yesterday, I think it was just yesterday. Yep. That was the last day of school and I got to climb through the window and get out to the rooftop and ring the bell, which was super fun.
President perks.
Yes, it's the perk of being president. You get to do it at the beginning and at the end of each school year. Anyway, it was really exciting to hear the bell. It's, it's really loud, too. It's awesome. It echoes. And I knew that when we were ringing that, that kids were, were finishing up and they're leaving for a great summer. So just want everyone to have a safe and happy summer, based on that. All right.
President?
Yep.
Just one thing I forgot, if you're done.
I'm done. Go ahead.
The Stadium Theater Program, I just want to mention, got nominated for sixteen awards in the state of Washington. They're gonna be, hopefully win some of those, but they've nominated. So I just, they're a jewel in the Arts Department in our district. So Liz Jacobson's the director at Stadium Theater. So thank you to that program.
Well, good luck. Fingers crossed. All right. So item eighteen, announcement of next regular board meetings. We will meet twice this summer, once on June, July fourteenth, 2022, and again on August eleventh, 2022 for business meetings. Because it's summer month, so we just meet once in the month. So, and then we'll have a retreat in August as well, which we have yet to find the date for, but it will be in August. And so anyone else have any comments or questions or things for the good of the order, Superintendent? No? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming and spending time with us tonight and have a safe summer. And we'll see you all in about, about three weeks for the next board meeting. Thanks.